Good evening and welcome to the September 6, 2011, meeting of the Samamish City Council. Mr. Sullawine, would you please read the roll?
On behalf of you, your honor, Councilmember Whitten.
Here.
Councilmember Curly.
Here.
Councilmember Cross.
President.
Councilmember Petiti. Councilmember James.
Here.
Councilmember Del.
Here.
Here, sir.
Here. Do we know if Councilmember Petiti is going to be here this evening?
I don't know.
Well, in case she isn't, could we have a motion to excuse her?
I move.
Second.
Move in second to excuse Councilmember Petiti. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Councilmember Whitten, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes to the agenda proposed?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I request that item number four on the consent agenda be removed for further discussion.
Okay, we'll remove item four and put it right after the consent agenda.
That's fine.
Any other changes? All those in favor of the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Propose. Player vote of six zero, it's approved. Now we have presentations and proclamations. Now, we also see some scouts here this evening. Would you like to come up to the rostrum and say which troop you're from and what you're here for?
You can all go up if you want to.
I'm Justin McComber, I'm here from troop 509, I'm going to be speaking later about my Eagle project.
Ah, okay.
I'm Dallinard, and troop 695 is here, and we are working on our communications merit badge, and we're passing off the requirement.
Great, thank you. Okay, next is a proclamation for National Recovery Month, and we have some people here, and please meet me up at the rostrum there. Okay, we have Laura Quinn here, who's a community organizer for North and East King County, working for King County.
That's correct.
Mm-hmm. And Barbara Lenook Rakita.
Yes.
From Friends of Youth.
Correct.
Great. And what we have is a proclamation here, and I'll read it. Whereas behavior health is an essential part of health and overall wellness, and people can and do recover from substance abuse, substance use, and mental disorders; and whereas all people have the fundamental inherent value to be accepted and treated with respect, human dignity, and worth; and whereas it is critical to educate our policymakers, friends, and family members, healthcare advisors, and businesses, that substance use and mental disorders are treatable, and that people should seek assistance for these conditions; and whereas substance use and mental disorders are serious public health problems, and we must continue to reach the millions more who need help; and whereas to help more people achieve long-term recovery, and learn how recovery benefits the nation's overall well-being, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, and the city of Samamish invite all residents to participate in raising awareness of this important health concern. Now therefore, on behalf of the Samamish City Council, I do hereby proclaim the month of September 2011 as National Recovery Month. Prevention works, treatment is effective, people recover in Samamish, and call upon the people to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, ceremonies, supporting this year's theme. Join the Voices for Recovery, Recovery Benefits Everyone. Proclaim this sixth day of September 2011. And Laura, would you accept this?
Thank you so much.
And please say, give us some erudite comments.
Erudite, uh-oh. Okay. One person can achieve recovery, but it takes a community to sustain recovery. This proclamation from the city of Samamish and other communities throughout King County, throughout Washington, and throughout the nation offers an acknowledgement that recovery is real and achievable, and offers public support to help sustain that recovery. On behalf of King County, we applaud and thank the city of Samamish, the mayor, and the council for your vision, and especially for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Well, I'd just like to thank you. I work at Friends of Youth, which is a youth and family provider here in Issaquah and in Samamish, and we appreciate your efforts and your support and the time that you've taken tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And I did want to remind the audience and the home audience that we do have a prescription drug collection container out in the front lobby of City Hall, and so that helps. I know we're one of the first cities to do this, and the program is expanding. Great. Thank you very much. Okay, next is public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council. Three-minute limit per person, or five minutes if representing the official position of a recognized community organization. Do we have a sign-up sheet? Takes two people to replace Melanie, doesn't it?
Two department heads.
Mr. Mayor, the microphones in the room aren't working, but we are picking up audio and they're recording, so people will need to speak up.
Great, thank you.
Romero Valderrama, Northeast Eighteenth Place, Samamish. I wanted to make two points. The first one, to thank all the members of the council and the city staff for the summer concert series that just, it was a fabulous series that took place, that not only strengthens the community involvement, but also promotes the arts and a healthy well-being of the citizens. It was very well organized, very well-run, I commend you all for that. The second point I wanted to address was I wanted to go back to, in the last council session before the break, I had talked about the community center, and that recommended to the council that you look at not only the YMCA, which you did engage at that meeting, but also to remind you all to engage organizations like Citizens for Samamish, Kiwanis Rotary, to find people who have worked in pools before, and take them, bring them in, talk to them, whether it's with the Economic Development Group that John James is running, or others, to be able to see how can we incentivize and encourage the private sector to take their role in that project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Romero. Now, is there someone else that would like to address the council? Sure, come on up. And the mic isn't working, so you'll have to speak loudly. Get your merit badge and projection.
So, I just, first of all, I wanted to thank everybody who helped me out with my Eagle project, it was, went great, and so if you want to continue contributing to the autistic community, you can go to my website, which is www.raceforautism.wordpress.com, and so that'll, from there you can just donate to Autism Speaks, which is, which is an organization that is doing research on autism in our area. And so because of my race, I was actually able to be, I guess nominated, right word, but as teen chair of the Seattle Walk, and so going to be doing that, it's September 17th, if you guys all want to come out and support the autistic community, it'd be great. So, yeah.
Wonderful. Where is that walk going to be then?
Oh, it's going to be at the Seattle Center in Seattle.
Uh-huh, what time of the day?
It starts at nine.
Starts at nine.
Starts at night. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to, go ahead, Vicki.
I actually did sign in, but...
Oh, on a different sheet?
Oh, would you like this, or...
Boy, it takes more than two people to replace...
I guess.
[laughing].
Anyway, good evening, City Council, my name is Vicki Baggett, I'm part of the Northeast Fourteenth Street community near Mystic Lake in Samamish, address is 23903 Northeast Fourteenth Street. And I'm here tonight with some of my neighbors, and we are here to bring attention to, as you will see in the overhead for the audience, and I think on your screens, we're looking at a piece of property that's about 40 acres previously, and still owned by the Wallises. It was called Mystic Lake back in the 1950s, they took over the land, they cleared it and built a house, they did a goat farming business there for about 25 years. Later on, when the original owners got elderly, it was turned into an arena for horses, they stabled horses. I live just down the street from there, and it's just mostly wetlands on the lower part, but it's kind of like llama landing. If you go to Inglewood Junior High, there's a wetland that kind of comes and goes. Right now, it looks like, you know, it's receded quite a bit, in the winter it fills up quite a lot. So, this is a place for, that holds water for the general area where a lot of building has taken place, and the benefit of a land like this is that it holds a lot of water, it filters down to underground streams, and those underground streams then feed Lake Samamish and keep that water quality what it should be, you know. So, back in the day, my friend Sonny Wallace, my neighbor, used to talk about the Audubon Society coming out and doing bird counting there by Mystic Lake. And what happened was, because of a lot of building that went on, drainage came into the lake and the habitat was kind of thrown aside, and the birds no longer were able to continue their populations there. And my hope is that, and my neighbor's hope, is that we can see this land revived and become a park for Samamish, a place where people can, on the upper, and by the way, I have pictures that we were going to show you, the top 40 of the land is dry, you can, there's an arena there, they were doing the horse shows, I could see it, working for dog shows, and, you know, Future Farmers of America. It could be a place where kids could come and, you know, do biology walks and learn more about their environment. So, these are things that could happen if the land isn't developed, and I understand that the Wallises are entertaining a bid from a developer, and it could be yet another set of empty houses sitting in this community, and really I'm hoping that this could be a park, because I think that the northeast quadrant of the city of Samamish is in need of a park. So, I have a petition here for my neighbors, and the petition reads, "We have lived in this neighborhood for a long time, for some time since Sonny and Bob Wallace passed away, we have been concerned about what might happen to the Wallace property. We would like to bring to your attention that there is no city park in the northeast quadrant, we would like to propose that this land would be perfect to preserve for many possible community uses, a multipurpose ball field, horse-riding trails, walking paths, and a bird sanctuary. Furthermore, with all the empty new housing developments sitting idle in this community, the city would do well to preserve this green space with a view toward the city's future. Why would the city allow more deforestation and building at this point? We realize that city funds may not meet the asking price of the property owners, the Wallises. We also understand that there are many green space organizations that would be willing to perhaps help make up the difference for purchase, like Washington Conservation Society, for instance. We would be happy to come alongside any city effort to preserve this as parkland, please see signatures below of our neighbors. Thank you, and please let us know how we can help."
Vicki, how many acres is that again?
Forty.
Forty acres. I know we've talked with them, and we have our parks director here this evening, Nancy?
Several years ago, Flintoffs came to us and asked that the city partner with them to build a park and permit them to do a cemetery there.
Flintoffs? I've never heard of them.
Well, they're the ones in Issaquah that have the funeral, huh?
Oh, okay.
They're pointing that they were running out of burial grounds in Issaquah, where a lot of our people go. I just wondered if your group had ever talked about that and how you might feel about...
No, we haven't talked about it being a cemetery, no.
While it would be mixed, they were suggesting a partnership.
I haven't, this is the first I've heard of it. I have no idea what my neighbors would think of that.
Thank you.
Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Vicki.
All right.
Good to see you here.
Thanks.
Several years ago, we were working with the property owners, they were under contract with a developer. Unfortunately, that contract, based on the council's direction, that contract did not come to fruition, so the development backed off. The price was always higher than what the appraised value at the time that we were discussing this.
At that time, right.
And as I understand, right now, council, another development is under contract with this property owner, so if the council is interested, I'll be happy to bring any information in another meeting. It's not a cheap property, it's a major acquisition, so I say that we do some due diligence and do work if that's what council wants me to do.
Comments from others?
How much of the land is billable, if it's 40 acres, and you say a lot of it is wetland? What percentage you think the developer will actually be able to build upon?
I think maybe 20 acres. I think about half of it is buildable, and the rest of it would not be. That's why it would be perfect, really, for a park, because even in rainy, cold weather, you know, you have kids who could be, you know, enjoying the space and, you know, the environment for their classes.
What does Mr., what does the Wallace estate want for the land?
I believe that the city has been talking with the Wallises. I personally don't have their contact information, so I can't tell you.
Just, you know, the price of what they, do you know what it was, Ben?
Ten million dollars.
It was 10 million, that was what, two years ago?
Yes.
So, it's 150,000 now?
But the, so then the market dropped out, okay, sorry.
It is not an inexpensive property. For the council's benefit, wetland will be protected, we have our critical areas ordinance, that the council was very proactive on that particular ordinance, we have enough protections to, even if the development took care that, we are not operating under the old county rules and ordinances, so to speak, so we have our new regulations in place.
Ben, refresh my memory, is it still in the county, or did we annex?
It was, this was approved by the planning commission to be in the planning annexation area. I don't think that it's annexed yet, it still is outside the city limits in an unincorporated King County.
So, then the county is, what is it zoned for in the county?
Scott may know this thing better.
Zone for R1, with the potential of a farm.
I think it's R4, but it's very limited in terms of what you can do there.
Yeah, Scott Hamilton, I was on the planning commission when this property came before the planning commission, and Mr. Clay was designated as a potential annexation area, and it was Mike Miller at the time, Murray Franklin, who had come in and asked for R4 zoning, and the commission did agree with that with the PAA.
And the council approved that after the commission's recommendation.
So, it's R4 in the PAA, so the county acknowledges that if they approve the development?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yeah, I was going to say, we went through a process, I remember I squawked because of the environmental concerns, and the majority felt that the R4 zoning was appropriate, so they have a right, as I understand it, to seek development at the R4 and annexation, and you can't, that's what it would be valued in.
Tom, did you?
You know, for the, for the new council members who may or may not know the history, when Samamish was incorporated, this actually was excluded, and so Samamish actually completely surrounded the property, and it was, at that time, still kind of maintained as zoning agricultural, or whatever the county...
Yeah, rural.
Rural. Rural. And from a land use planning standpoint, that really didn't make a lot of sense, so when it came to the planning commission, and I think this would have been 2009, maybe even 2008, must have been 2008 before the whole market collapsed, Mike Miller came in and asked for R4, and, and given the fact that this was wholly surrounded by the city, and Sonny Wallace, I think at by that time had passed on?
Yes.
Just a few years ago, actually, but she did move to a elderly...
Yeah, but considering, you know, the circumstances of family, and the family was asked for it, the commission was amenable to the request and passed it on to the council accordingly.
Well, is there any consensus from the council to have staff?
I would just, you know, urge the city to go and take a look at this property and see what you can do, it's a fabulous piece of property, and, and yes, you're looking at R4 zoning pricing on it, there's no question about that, but you have to also look at future generations for the city, there just is not available land in the north end of the city of this nature, and I would sure urge the city to take a hard look at that, and, you know, knock 10 million dollars off the Taj Mahal Community Center, and you can buy this.
And don't forget that the conservation societies, there are a lot of green space organizations that would come alongside the city to purchase the land.
Tom?
I would be in favor of us taking a look at acquiring this property. I agree with Scott that this is kind of a rarity up there, and those that are left are rapidly going away.
Good question.
I believe that one thing that might help us here is that this could be one place where we put our recently passed TDR ordinance to work, that could be used to help offset the acquisition cost of this whole project here. But I would hate to have us sit here and twiddle our thumbs and things go on with the county, and the developer just goes on his way, because frankly, we don't control this property, this is an incorporated county right now, even though it's in our PAA.
Yeah, but so was Evans Creek.
Yeah, I know.
Other comments? Don't forget that we do have the TDR program with Department of Natural Resource land that has 120 acres or something like that.
That's correct.
Right, at our, outside our boundary, but part of it's inside the urban growth boundary, so we do have that program going too. Is there, Mark?
Well, I would just say that we have looked at DNR property, one corner of which is inside the urban growth boundary, that could be developed for active use, as well as passive trails and such, and that is the other one that we've discussed in the area. We've looked at this, the usable part for parks on this property, I don't think we were as optimistic about us being able to build big, flat ball fields on the Wallace property as maybe the owner is thinking a developer could build houses, it doesn't need to be quite as flat as the ball fields that we would be looking at. But it is true that we've looked at the northeast quadrant as the next quadrant of the city to receive a park, and to that extent, it is worth looking at and understanding what the relative cost is, and maybe to get an update also on the DNR property, so that we can understand how close that might be. It's possible that maybe that something's happened with the DNR property that might change our thinking about this.
Mr. City Manager, we, did we have it appraised at a time in the past?
We do, Mr. Mayor, I would recommend that we not talk anymore if this is what something that you want to do, so a couple things, we never make an acquisition like size like this in our public meeting, in our comments, and...
Well, we're not making acquisitions.
The second is, the budget numbers, I'd like to have some discussion with you guys, and the third is, I'll bring the information to you on thus what we have in the files, and you can take a look at it.
Okay.
But...
Good, good, thank you. Thank you, Vicki. Scott?
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the council? Oh, seeing none, then public comment is closed. Next is consent agenda, with item four removed from it, we have a whole list of payroll here. Additional payroll check for period ending June 30th, in the amount of $673.45. Payroll for the period ending July 15th, in the amount of about $256,000. Payroll for a period ending July 31st, in the amount of $259,000. Payroll for a period ending August 15th, in the amount of $256,000. Payroll for a period ending August 31st, in the amount of $256,000. Approval of claims for the period ending August 2nd, in the amount of $729,000. Approval of claims for a period ending August 15th, in an amount of $998,000. Approval of claims for a period ending September 6th, in the amount of $1,600,000. And approval of the minutes for the July 5th, 2011 regular meeting, the July 12th, 2011 regular meeting, and the July 18th, 2011 regular meetings. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
They still move? A second it?
Been moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Player vote is six zero, it's approved. Now we come to item number four, which is the award of 244th Avenue Non-Motorized Project.
Mr. Mayor, we have a brief staff report, so just kind of refreshing for the council, just before the recess, we came to the council, and it was asked council for authorization to award the construction project on this. Unfortunately, the bid price came about a $6,000 higher than the authorization. That authorization was granted unanimously by the council, but because the bid price came higher than the authorized amount, I had to bring this thing back to you. So, that was the reason why this was put into consent calendar, because it was discussed extensively prior to recess, it was discussed in the budget time, it was discussed prior to six-year transportation plan, and I'll have our city engineer, Jeff Brown, to give you staff report.
Great, welcome, Jeff.
Thank you, Ben. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and councilmembers. Got a presentation for you, just summarizing what Ben just said. This is the 244th Avenue Non-Motorized Improvements, this, the limits of this are from Northeast Eighth Street to Northeast Twentieth Street, and I've got a map that'll come up after this slide, but first I just wanted to briefly go over the prior times this issue, either specifically or amongst other non-motorized topics has been before the council, starting back in 2008 with our annual non-motorized program update slash description, and we've done that then again in June 2009, June 2010, and then more specifically, March of this year, we approved a design contract with Reed Middleton for this, this project.
That's it.
And then in June, we adopted the 2012, 2017 six-year TIP, which included this project. And then in July, your last meeting before the August recess, we explained the staff's desire to break the project into two phases, and then also requested authorization to proceed with construction of Phase One. Now, as Ben has alluded to, unfortunately, our bids had come in higher than the council authorization, so that brings us to the next item there in orange, requesting authorization to award the construction contract for Phase One. And then I've got down there in eccalics, at your next regular scheduled meeting, excuse me, study session, we're going to be coming to you again with a non-motorized program description, which will talk about everything from this point forward.
Okay.
Here's a map I've got that breaks down, so the overall project from Northeast Eighth to Northeast Twentieth, which are on the two extreme edges of the photo there, and at the July 18th council meeting, we talked about the need to break up the phases, so that we could get the Phase One under construction before the winter season, and also that's a project that has a TIP grant. Then Phase Two, which is the lion's share of the length, and has more exposure to the elements, and we wanted to not get into that area in steep slopes as we're approaching the wet season, and we felt it was more prudent to wait till next summer. And addition, as I'll get to another slide, there's a new grant opportunity for that phase. And the dividing line right there is Northeast Eleventh Street, which is directly across from Rachel Carson Elementary, which is that white building right there at the demarcation between Phase One and Phase Two. This slide just outlines our schedule. Phase One is construction this summer, and we've got a pre-construction meeting scheduled, assuming council authorization, with the contractor tomorrow morning, and then they're scheduled to hopefully begin work next Monday, the 12th of September. And then Phase Two, as I mentioned, would begin construction next spring. The breakdown of the budget, the adopted budget has... The breakdown of the budget, the adopted budget has $1.7 million allocated for this project, and then also we've received a grant from the State Transportation Improvement Board for $156,000. The expenditures to date are the construction contract, first line, $306,728, with a construction contingency of 10% is the next line. The design contract, which has already been authorized, is for both phases, that's just a couple thousand under $300,000. And then the next item covers right away, some materials testing, advertisement, some construction signs, just a whole bunch of miscellaneous construction items there. So you subtract all that out from the previous slide, and we have $1.2 million remaining in the adopted budget for construction of Phase Two. And here's Phase Two, which goes from northeast 11th to northeast 20th Street. As I mentioned, we're scheduled to begin construction next spring. We have applied for a TIB Rapid Start Grant, which is a new program that the TIB has adopted with the prime incentive to get construction shelf-ready projects out on their street very quickly. So they've allocated a large portion of money specifically for these projects that will compete on a separate basis. And we will find, we submitted the application last week, and we will find out in mid-November whether or not we are successful.
How much are we asking for?
Approximately $1 million.
Oh.
We have a good chance of getting it.
Great.
Just it really depends on how the competition stacks up.
Mm-hmm.
It's a new program, so we don't really know how many applications are going to be received by the TIB.
Tom?
And as mentioned before, just two other quick things.
Okay.
Allow it to construct out of the wet season and give some time. There's a few poles that PSC needs to relocate.
Tom?
Jeff, can you go back to where you showed the grant we currently have? Yeah. We originally approved the budget of $1.7 million for the entire project. We get a TIB grant of $156,000, and all of a sudden, the project budget goes up by that amount. Why is that, is the grant not subtracted?
To keep it at $1.7 million.
Budget has not been changed. Budget is currently as $1.7 million, and any changes to budget will take place, Tom, in November that we come to you with the budget appropriations time.
That was assuming we get the TIB grant. Is that right, Laura?
So at the time, we budgeted $1.7 million. We did not know whether or not we had the $156,000.
Right.
So the $156,000 is new revenue.
Uh-huh.
And in November, when we do the budget amendment, as Ben stated, at that time, we could make a decision to either replace existing city funds or add additional budget to the project. Currently, we don't have that $156 authorized in the budget for expenditures, but it also has not been shown as revenue. And as Jeff showed, the project being broken into two phases, we're asking for the $300-plus-thousand authorization tonight, which would require a budget amendment later this year to carry forward or to move the remaining money to 2012 for the Phase Two project, which has not been bid yet.
Okay. I'll plead guilty to being the one that asked to have this moved off the consent agenda. And one reason I did is I think any expenditure item with a total number of about $1.8 million is worthy of a few words beyond saying yes. I have no problem with the first section. I think that's a go, so I will vote yes on that. I still have some concerns about the Phase Two, and both the cost and need for that, but we can come back to that at a different time.
So for the record, Tom, I just want to clarify for the audience, this is not a $1.8 million expenditure. What's being recommended tonight is awarded a $306,000 construction contract.
Agree, agree. Mike?
Do I understand that previously, we had approved this project at like $290,000?
Right.
So we're really the...
$10,000, $15,000 difference.
Yeah. I was curious, Jeff, about the end of Phase One. You were saying it's at 11th. That really ends up kind of in the middle of the school property. Would we really build the sidewalk kind of halfway across the front of the school?
No. Technically, the limits, the construction limits, when you get down to the sidewalk along the full fringe of the school, and there's not a really street name there, so...
So this is really just from the ground?
This is closing the gap. This is closing the gap.
The edge of the school property.
Correct, correct. So northeast, from northeast 11th, there's going to be some striping changes. The sidewalk already exists at northeast 11th.
Yeah. And I support the idea that Tom has, that at the time, we can look and see whether the north end of Phase Two is that we want to go that far, or maybe we want to go some shorter distance, and that's just a decision we can make in the future, future councils.
Totally agree, and you need to see other facts also. We have some development proposals that we conditioned them to put the sidewalk improvements. There's a church there, there's a public workshop there, so there's some conditions of development improvements that we have to put in place there.
I apologize for skipping over the whole budget issue there, because Phase Two will require a council action, either being a carry forward or bringing a modification of the budget. So there's multiple, no matter which way we go, there'll be required council action.
Go ahead.
Yes, we've been members of the church, I just wanted to disclose that, as well as Michelle Petiti, when it's already an existing condition and there are development permits that the church contribute to this project, I believe, so...
Correct. There's a delayed franchise agreement.
I want to disclose that, so there's not any question.
Public workshop also, which is recently built, has a delayed franchise.
Other questions for staff? Nope. Then do I have a motion to authorize the city manager to award and execute a contract with Archer Construction for the 244th Non-Motorized for the amount of $306,728.25?
Second?
With the contingency?
With the contingency.
With the contingency of $30,673. Further discussion? Ready for questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. By your vote of 6-0, it's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Jeff. Next is item number eight, which is an ordinance to incorporate supplemental amendments into the Town Center regulations. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, this is actually, we had had multiple study sessions, multiple discussions on this topic, and at the last council meeting, you gave us a direction, and what's before you, that reflects the council's direction, and it's the council's consensus. We couldn't put this in the consent, partly because you left the public hearing open. So what we need to do tonight is to open the public hearing. If there's any testimony, we'll take the testimony, then we'll close the public hearing. If the council wants to see an extensive staff report, we're prepared to do that once again, but it's your pleasure.
Okay. We had a public hearing on July 5th, we continued it to July 18th, and then we continue it now to September 6th. So, public hearing's now open. Do we have anybody that signed up to speak?
No one's signed up.
Is there anybody that would like to speak on this? Seeing none? Public hearing is closed. So it's, we could get a motion on the table. What we have is the original proposed ordinance, and then we have the changes per our discussion on July 5th.
Don, I could make a motion.
Go ahead.
I make a motion to approve the amendment of the transfer development rights as proposed by staff attached in our package today. How do you want me to phrase this?
Approve the ordinance 02011 with the attachment D. What is the ordinance number, Mike? If I may recommend a proposed motion for you.
It's 2011-310.
310.
Ditto.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Mark?
I want to support this. I appreciate the comments we've had and the discussion back and forth on whether or not to have flexibility on the city-owned properties, and if so, where that flexibility would allow us to allocate density from city property. By having this ordinance, we retain the flexibility to develop some kind of housing in the future as a component of some project yet to be designed or really, you know, imagined. But we also have the flexibility to sell and transfer the development rights to one specific portion of the town center. And I appreciate John James's work and thoughts on this. He worked a lot on the details, and I remember him a couple nights when I couldn't bring all those details up. He was ready to do so, and I appreciate that.
I've coordinated with the council member, James, in advance of this meeting to make sure that this reflects the last council meeting's consensus decision.
Tom?
I'd like to echo Councilmember Cross's comments about the benefit of the flexibility of this ordinance, and also ditto his comments about John James's role in this.
Evan, I have a couple of questions for you. One, reading through Section 2, it talks about the bonus for commercial and residential development capacity. This is in Attachment B, revised language, page three of three. We skipped putting in Sections A, B, and C, and I don't recall whether the TDR program, using the TDR program for commercial square footage, does it require first exhaustion of the affordable housing bonus pool before you can transfer for commercial?
Mayor, my name is, of course, Evan Maxim, senior planner with the city of Spamish. For commercial square footage, we do not require that you use any affordable housing prior to using a TDR.
Okay. And this program here, which is not technically TDR, it's transferring units from one section of the town center to one of the other sections, but it's not in our TDR program as such.
Right.
You can call it another bonus pool program. It doesn't address using it for commercial or retail at all. Did we decide that we would not allow this to be used in trading residential units for commercial space?
Respectfully, Mr. Mayor, as drafted, this is a residential-to-residential.
Residential-to-residential only. John?
Just to give some light on clarification, the idea being is that the county and the private citizens would be competing for those commercial space TDRs, and we would only be in the pool with the county for the one-to-one exchange rate for the residential. So in order not to have too many players in one area, it was talked about limiting the city's involvement in the commercial TDRs.
So in the city's residential TDR program, we've removed the ability to trade into Zone A as a receiving site. Is that right? From R1, R4, R6, you can't go into Zone A?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
We've crossed off the 10 dwelling units, the five dwelling units, and the four dwelling units from that table?
That was the council's direction.
Okay, but you can still go into commercial or retail in Zone A?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Nancy?
I want to thank John and staff both for coming up with something that seems to have addressed all of our concerns, and I really support this. Thank you, especially the portion that does it, makes it simple. I think simple is better, and one-on-one, one unit being sold for one unit in the A-zone, I think is a great solution. I have one question for you. That was relating to the concern about preventing speculation by town center property owners. I see you've addressed that in the revised language 2D, saying the city shall limit the sale of dwelling units to projects that have pending land use applications within the town center. I just wondered if to further clarify that, you might want to have, if you do sell it or have a conditional sale, is some way it could revert back to the city and be available to other land uses if that application doesn't get approved within a certain period of time or something? I mean, I don't think it's critical, but I think the purpose is that these be available for an application that's going to be viable, and not just being held for speculation.
Councilmember, if I may, I'll remind you that land use applications have a clock, so to speak, on processing.
Right.
This does limit that sale to pending land use applications?
I understand that, but if the application either gets denied or lapses due to time, they still would own the rights if they've bought them. And that's my concern, is that they come back to the city to be available for an application that actually gets approved and gets pursued.
Would it be okay? I think you're talking about a very important point, Nancy, that, you know, but given the subdivision applications, about a five-years time cycle, what are we talking about, Evan?
Five years.
And if we feel like we're going to run into that situation, there's already annual report that we have to give you on this particular transfer of development rights activity in our city. If we sense that there's something like that, we will also bring up to council the attachments, so we'll recommend you at that point to make some necessary revisions to it.
That's just fine. I mean, I'm really pleased with what you've done. I think you hit all, each and every one of the points that this council brought up and have come up with a great solution. So I just red-flag that or something.
Reven.
So that if it does become an issue, we can deal with it. Thank you.
Nancy, I think you bring up a good point. This is starting to sound a bit familiar. When we went through the county TDR program, we had a provision in it, and I forget exactly how the language read, and Evan, maybe you can refresh us on it, was that if someone did not use their TDR or did not use the property within X number of years, I forget what we wound up with.
10 years?
I think it was 10 years. That it reverted back to status quo ante.
Right. But the council decided they don't want that to be gone back.
Right.
You guys had extensive discussion on that topic, so we eliminated that. But again, I think it's an important topic. I don't want to minimize this thing. But we have required to bring you annual report on this thing, so if you feel like three, four years down the road, in one of the annual reports, there's a danger sign in a particular TDR, then we will let you know that, and we'll propose additional changes to it. We can't solve that thing right now. I don't have a specific language to address that at this point, and...
You could also make any sale agreement conditioned upon that. I mean, you could do it at time of sale through conditions to your agreement.
Evan, I have another question, and that is, I'm trying to visualize a developer coming in. He puts an application in. When he puts an application in, hopefully he has his financing lined up, but he doesn't know how much the units are going to sell for, because it says the pricing shall be within 90 days of closing on the sale. And I think that should be more like six months or something like that, so they can start the application process knowing how much it's going to cost them. If they find out it's exorbitantly high, they won't want to start it even. So I'm posing that I think the 90 days is much too short.
We can manage that if the council has a consensus, that's a surgical change. I just don't have a language for the previous topic at this point.
What about 90 days from preliminary application?
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, a person doesn't want to apply and spend the money researching a project if they have no idea how much it's going to cost them for these units.
Yeah.
Do you think six months is enough?
Well, I don't know. Evan, what do you think?
Respectfully, Mr. Mayor, I think, as Ben noted, a surgical change here would be appropriate for the city council. I think this is also the kind of thing, working with the development community, they'll have done an initial appraisal before even approaching the city and be tracking the market condition, I would assume, all along. But I would agree with you that the change here, 90 days is probably too short. It's more appropriate in a residential timeframe. So I would tend to support the recommendation of six months.
Six months? Well, then I would...
I propose a friendly amendment.
Okay, Tom, go ahead.
John, if it's okay with you, I'd like to propose a friendly amendment to your thing that would change subparagraph D, what refers to 90 days to read 180 days.
Would you accept that as a friendly?
Sure. I don't know if it's going to be a material change for a developer. I didn't pick the 90, so...
With the county, I think that it's such a minor thing that I don't think it's going to change our inner local agreement in any materialistic way, so fundamental way. We're okay. I think we can manage that. If the council wants to increase that to six months, we're okay with that.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Mark?
I'm going to support it. I do think, though, that we need to have some number that's just as much. At some point, if these get interesting to multiple developers, they could be stepping on top of each other for the limited number of units that are available. And so you don't want people holding them and preventing another development from going forward. So six months is, I think...
Reasonable.
More flexible, but I think that's as much flexibility as we should provide.
Okay. It doesn't say who does the market analysis. This assumes that the city would do the market analysis because they're the ones that are going to sell it. Is that right, Evan?
Respectfully, Mr. Mayor, I think this is actually part of the real estate transaction, where both the city and the potential buyer would be evaluating the market analysis. That would be up to the city manager or city council to negotiate who would actually pay for the analysis itself.
Okay. Any other discussion? Are you ready for the question?
Just a point of clarification, just so I know the order here. So when it says sale, which sale are we talking about? Would we actually purchase the land?
No, sale of the units, right? That refers to the sale of these units.
Right.
The city's units.
Yeah.
Your rights, really.
Yeah. So whenever the developer in his process wants to actually buy the units, the analysis has to, market analysis has to be performed within 180 days of when that sale's going to close.
When they would acquire it from the city, yes.
Yes.
Would an example help, Councilmember James?
I just don't know if this is quite the, since we're wordsmithing this, and I hate to do it now, it just doesn't, the timing now just doesn't, seems to be a little bit off, as Don brought it up. If somebody acquires, are we saying somebody acquires the land in town center Zone A, and then they come to us and say we want, they want development rights?
Well, they don't have to have acquired the land yet. They come in with an application, a development application, and then they may have an option on the land.
Frankly, Mr. Mayor, if I may echo you, most commonly developments we see in the city, the developer has an option to purchase the property upon receipt of all land use approvals for their development. I suspect, again, this is something that would be negotiated through the direct sale contract, more than something that requires legislative action tonight.
So what I envision is the developer coming in, aggregating parcels with options, and once he's got that, and he has some idea how much he's going to pay for these extra units, then he files his application.
Right, yeah.
And once he sees the application coming to fruition, then he feels comfortable about actually buying the units. You okay with that, John?
Yeah, that's fine. So it can be done sooner, but not to exceed six months?
Right.
Okay. Then, ready for a question? All those in favor of the ordinance, including the friendly amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. By your vote of 6-0, Ordinance 2011-310 is approved.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. And I would also thank Evan, that he's actually on vacation, so he just came from his vacation for tonight for this item. So thank you, Evan. Have a fantastic vacation.
I couldn't think of a better place to have vacation.
It's nice and sunny. Get a bag of chips on your way out, Evan. What a good...
Okay. Item number nine, medical marijuana collective garden moratorium public hearing. Do we have a staff report first?
Our deputy city manager, Lyman Howard, has a staff report on this, Mr. Mayor.
Lyman?
Right. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you, Ben. I have a very brief staff report to basically bring us up to speed on where we are, why we are here. On July 18th, city council passed an emergency ordinance related to putting a moratorium on collective gardens related to medical marijuana. The ordinance, or the structure, requires that we hold a public hearing within 60 days. As a reminder, there is conflict between the state law related to medical cannabis and federal law. State legislation does allow medical marijuana dispensaries and collective gardens. However, the governor did receive a warning from the U.S. Department of Justice, which caused her to do a partial or a sectional veto of the legislation as passed by the legislature. So July 18th, the city council passed a moratorium to give the city time to review how other cities, other municipalities are dealing with the issues as raised. Also gives time for clarifying legislative action, hopefully from the state. And again, it also protects city employees from federal prosecution, which is what the governor was trying to get away from with her partial veto. The moratorium is for six months, with there is a potential for additional, should it be needed. The idea is to refer the moratorium and the issue related to medical cannabis to the planning commission and back to the city council for potential action. So tonight, staff is recommending that council open the hearing, collect public testimony, and then close the hearing. Council is not required to take any action at this time, however, you may reserve that right to do so. And with that, if you have any questions?
Questions? To supplement Lyman, the Association of Washington Cities had a legislative committee meeting this morning, and medical marijuana issue is a recommended preliminary major priority of the Safe and Healthy Communities Subcommittee, and it'll be going to the AWC board later this month. So we're seeking further definition and limits on collective bargains as created in Senate Bill 5073, and so including clarifying city's authority to regulate and/or prohibit collective gardens. So hopefully, we'll get some clarification from the legislature in the next session. But we'll have to, probably have to extend the ordinance at least once before that becomes, the changes become effective.
Very possible.
Yeah. Other comments?
So in effect, our hands are tied until something happens in Olympia.
No.
Well, our hands aren't tied, but, well, we have this moratorium right now.
Right. I understand.
No, our hands aren't tied. We can go ahead like some other cities have done.
What's Issaquah done? They haven't voted on it yet, have they?
Actually, they passed a very similar moratorium.
They put the moratorium on as well? Six months or whatever it is?
But Seattle didn't, right?
No. Seattle seems to have embraced the medical cannabis and has actually, I believe, changed the classification and declared that all of their dispensaries that they had in place before were actually, in effect, collective gardens.
As I recall, Seattle has embraced it since the '60s. Having lived there in the '60s. Nancy?
You know, it seems to me that with this conflict between federal and state law, that there's not a right, and it makes it very difficult to figure out what we should be doing treading this thing. The governor vetoed sections, as I recall, because she was concerned about liability of state officials who carried out the proposed state law. So we're really in a hard space here against a pretty brick wall, and I think we need to figure out the best course of action. I don't think there's a right course of action, and it makes it, I think, very difficult for us, is local insignificant compared to the national and state level, to figure out what we should be doing, and that we need the time to see what everybody else is doing and see if we can find some better consensus on how to proceed in the future. So I'm really in favor of the moratorium because I think we're just in an untenable position, so...
The National League of Cities Steering Committees, in fact, are meeting Thursday in New Orleans, and this topic will be brought up at that point. So we're making some efforts to try to get the federal law and state laws consistent. Okay. Any other comments for staff? Mark?
I had two thoughts. One is that a planner I used to work for told me that moratoriums come in groups of three. And so if you do, if we do have a moratorium, I think you'll end up with a couple more extensions, whoever's on the council in the future, waiting for action from the state legislature. So I would think you might want to actually think through what the implications are, you know? When Bartel Drugs closes up for the night, they lock everything indoors. This is proposing to allow people to have stuff outdoors that people might want to try to take from them. I'm concerned that's going to become a police problem, that we're creating a new police problem. And so I hope that you start to think this through without necessarily hoping that you're going to get divine guidance from the state legislature or from other cities. And really think about whether we want to have gardens is very different than a dispensary that's a building that's locked up at night. Those are the two comments I have. Thank you.
Groups of three. I know our subdivision moratorium went for seven years.
Wasn't a moratorium.
What was it?
I don't know, but that was one of the...
Didn't we have six-month moratoriums on new developments, new subdivisions?
Wasn't it?
And we kept extending every six months.
Oh, then our allocation system...
For seven years.
13 times, I think.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments before open public hearing? Okay. Open the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to testify? No? Well, then we'll close the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And there's no action required by the council at this time?
Oh, we already approved this order, so there's no actions required tonight.
Next on the agenda, there's no unfinished business, there's no new business, so we have council reports. John?
As the Chair of the Economic Development Committee, we're just in conversation amongst the two other members, John Curley and Tom Odell, as to when and where and what the topic will be of the next meeting, so stay tuned.
Great. Mark?
No report tonight.
Okay. Tom?
Just a brief mention of the fact that I'll be attending a National League of Cities Leadership Training Seminar for the next several days in Minneapolis, and I hope to come back smarter and sassafer.
Okay. John?
Other than just continuing to send kudos and backslaps and accolades to the people that work in the city, I hear from more and more people all the time, they just say, you know, "I called the city, they were unbelievably responsive, the permitting process is great, they're easy to work with, they are respectful. When I don't know what I'm doing, I never feel like I'm being put down." So whenever I have an opportunity to pass along to staff, especially people coming in on their vacations, pretty good. Keep up the good work. It's really nice.
Nancy?
I just wanted to make a couple of comments. First of all, while we were on vacations, staff was working hard on roads, and we did a pavement overlay on both Issaquah Pine Lake Road and Southeast 24th, east of 228th. And I want to compliment staff. They're wonderful. Southeast 24th gave a little bit of a shoulder on both sides, so people, we have a sidewalk on one side, so we can walk safely, and then there are basically, not quite bike lanes, but the equivalent. It's wonderful, whereas it used to be no shoulder at all, so bikes had to compete with cars. So Southeast 24th repavement was, I think, a great coup for staff. And Issaquah Pine Lake Road is wonderful. I mean, they haven't quite finished the striping, but it's just, again, people have found a pathway on both sides, which is one of the, I think it was the main road that the city hasn't addressed, where we didn't have a shoulder. So that's just a great accomplishment, very nice, John. The only thing I'm looking forward to staff resolving in the future is a potential turn lane at the Montessori School. That didn't happen, I guess, because of the drainage requirements, but hopefully will happen sooner than later. So anyway, I think our city is a lot safer for these new pathways and bike lanes and, or shoulders. And anyway, I wanted to thank staff and recognize the fact that they were even better than I'd hoped they would be. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
There's one more thing.
Mm-hmm.
I got a notice on a legal, continuing legal seminar that's for not just attorneys, but for people interested in government and things like that. And one of them is on financing town centers. And I, it's, I think, November 13th, and I thought I would send that to council. I'll be out of town, so I can't go to that, but maybe our mayor or somebody on the Economic Development Committee would like to attend that, or at least look at it, possibly attending that. It's on combined private government financing of town centers of all is one of the subjects.
Where is it?
In Seattle area.
One day?
Yeah. I think it's one day.
I'd be interested.
Well, anyway, I'd like to send that around. Remind me after the meeting to get that to you.
Great. Is that it, Nancy?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. The mayor's report, I spent today in Olympia, and in the morning, we had the executive, we had the Legislative Committee meeting, which was basically the compilation of all the subcommittees and addressing which policies we want to move forward as important to cities in the next legislative session. Now, we know that in the next legislative session is going to be another tough one. September 15th, the, our economic, our economist, the state economist, is going to come out with his next projections. The word on the street is that it's going to be $1 to $2 billion more that's going to have to be extracted from the next biennium. Yes, every time, it seems that he has to extract more.
Can we keep him home for a while?
Yeah. And so people are already wringing their hands as to what's going to happen, and we recognize that for cities to go in and ask for more money from the legislature, it's not going to happen. Basically, we're going to have to go in and say where we would like them to minimize the cuts. But there are other issues where we asked for flexibility last year, and we did a very good job on it. We might try again this year in the personnel area, in SEPA, State Environmental Protection Act Reform, tax increment financing. So we discussed that this morning. And then from noon till 3:00, we had a joint meeting, the Executive Board of AWC had a joint meeting with the Executive Board of Washington State Association of Counties. And we're having a good kumbaya working relationship with the counties in recent years. And actually, last year, it really helped, going into the governor's office together. She was very impressed with that, and the legislature was impressed that we were coming together. We don't always have the same issues as counties, and sometimes we're on separate sides of defense. What we've decided is, on those issues that we're on separate sides, we won't discuss them. But things like SEPA personnel, issues, apparently incarceration of someone on Medicaid cancels the Medicaid, and then they have to reapply, and this sounds like something that shouldn't have to be.
And in the meantime, we pick up the cost.
Yes. And also, again, public records issues, the cities and the counties have trouble with that. So it was a good session this afternoon. We'll be meeting with the governor on September 27th, and I think we might even get an hour of her time.
Right.
Mark?
On the subject of things that the state could do for us that are not costing, would not cost them, one of the things for flexibility would be with school financing, the operating and maintenance levies that different districts are allowed to go after with their local citizens, and again, based on votes of their citizens. The flexibility is not there for Issaquah and Lake Washington to seek the same level of operating and maintenance that, for instance, Bellevue, Mercer Island, Taquilla, Seattle, Everett have. And it may be that voters would simply say no, 27, 28... And it may be that voters would simply say, no, 27, 28% of the operating budget of Lake Washington is as high as will go in a vote, but why should Mercer Island have the flexibility to ask for 37%, and Lake Washington's prohibited by law from going above 27%? So, there is more flexibility in school funding that they could achieve for us that would allow that to rest with the local voters in determining how much they're going to support their local school districts.
I think that's under discussion, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
There's a task force or something, a committee?
Well, the school districts are trying to push that issue at the legislative level.
Okay. I'm leaving tomorrow for New Orleans for the Steering Committee meeting. All the steering committees are getting together, National League of Cities, for three days, so I'll be back Sunday, Saturday. City manager report?
I have no report, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
No report?
No report.
Anything else for the good of the order? No? Okay, then, we're adjourned.